Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founders of Get Oiling, Greg and Amanda Killwine. Hey, guys.
Hey, everybody.
Morning, afternoon.
Yes, morning, afternoon, night, wherever in the world you are, we're thrilled to have you here today. We also have the amazing Colin and Julie from our team. Hi, guys.
Hello.
Everyone.
And today we are joined by two super special guests from our concierge team. The amazing, beautiful and beautiful making Jessicas. Hello, Jessica Danhoff and Jessica Downing.
Hi, everyone.
Hi. As you're coming in, you guys head over into the chat. Let us know where in the world you are. I hope you are breathing well today, wherever you are. I'm on the East Coast and I know for a little while back, you guys in the Dakotas, y'all had some of the wildfire smoke. Man, New York City just got it so bad. So I hope I see someone in the tri-state here. Hello, I hope you're breathing well today. Stay inside. Anyway, I hope wherever you are in the world, it is beautiful and you are ready to learn. Today, we are going to chat with two members of our concierge team, our Jessicas here today. And we're going to learn some of their favorite design tips. For those of us who are using our Get Oiling system to its fullest potential, we know that you can create beautiful webpages, events, blog posts, all kinds of really great stuff that look the way you want them to, that represent you the way you want to be showing up online, using your Get Oiling system that was built to help you grow your Young Living Brand Partner business. So today we're going to learn some pro tips and also learn a little bit about how our incredible talented folks here can help you reach your goals more quickly. Now, before we get into that, a little bit of housekeeping. If you are here today looking for help, this is a live session that we run every week at noon Eastern US time. It's an opportunity for you to get your questions asked. If you're more of a hands-on person, you want to see something figured out in front of you as opposed to reading an email, which our team is very skilled at sending and often they'll send you a video. But if you want to work through something live in Q and A fashion, this is a great opportunity to do it. If you need that today, go to the Q and A and let us know here on Zoom. And if you would like to sign up for dedicated space on a future call, maybe you need to schedule it for one of our future sessions at noon Eastern. You can go to getoiling.com/workreview or is it website review? Sorry, getoiling.com/websitereview. And you'll be able to sign up for a dedicated time in the future. Now, if you want to watch this live, of course, if you want to be on our Zoom call, if you're watching this as a recording in the future, you can actually get on a Zoom call just like this with us. If you go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession, you'll also be the first to get our replays, our resources, and of course, you'll get the links to join us live. And finally, if you're looking for help with getting things done, you need a hand with getting things done. And maybe you want to work with these amazing folks that you're going to meet today. Then you can go to getoiling.com/concierge to learn more about our team, what they can do for you and request a quote for whatever your project might be. So let's get into it, you guys. I am excited to see where you are in the world and what you're excited to learn about today. We've got Kansas City. We've got, the air is good in Saskatchewan. Fantastic. Got Arizona here. And of course, here on the call, as usual, we've got New York City, Fargo, North Dakota. We've got the East Coast of Florida. We've got DC, Canada. And of course, we have our Jessicas here, who you're going to be hearing from personally here in just a minute. They'll tell you where they are, what they're into and what they can do for you here in just a minute. So keep it going in the chat. We are so excited to have you here today. Now that we've got that out of the way, I'm going to switch into our speaker view so that we can see the folks who are talking. So I want to introduce you guys. Who wants to go first? We have two Jessica Ds and we are so thrilled to have you here. Yeah, we actually did not figure that out before we started our call today. We figured, we figured that we would go, you know, full last names because we're both Jessica Ds. But let's just go in alphabetical order then. Hi, Jessica Danhoff, come out and chat with us. I think you're a familiar face here. Some folks who have been with us for a number of years have met you in the inbox already, or maybe have had some work done by you. So Jess, tell us a little bit about you and your background and where you're from.
Yes, I am from Dickinson, North Dakota, so west half of North Dakota, almost Montana, really close to the Badlands. So during the summer, I spend most of my time in Midora and in the Badlands because it's a beautiful area. I went to school, I actually started off in accounting of all things when I went to college because, you know, I was going to make the big bucks. And I thought that that was safe because like, you know, everyone needs their taxes done. And I started off in school and I, one, I think like, one and a half years into school, I decided, I was like, you know what? No, I want to go back to my childhood dream. My childhood dream has always been to illustrate children's books. I love designing and drawing and making things pretty. So I was like, I'm going back. So I, I ex-nayed the accounting, even though I love numbers. So it's weird because like, right side, left side of the brain. I apparently have both sides of my brain working. So I went back and I got my major in art and my minor in graphic design. And I, so I've started, I've been building websites since 2014 roughly in there. And then Amanda and Greg approached me in 2019 and asked if I could build websites for them. And I gladly hopped on their ship and have been making the money there instead of accounting. And I've absolutely loved it. Like I said, I love being able to take someone's napkin sketch ideas is what I call them. Because sometimes they come to me and they're like, I, this is what I, like, this is my rough idea. I don't know how to make it come to life. Can you just make it pretty? And I, that's why I love, I love taking your ideas and then just designing them. And it's easier for me to design for other people. I've noticed when people, when I like, I'm going to sit down and make my own logo today, and then it's like, five months later, I'm like, let's finish this logo. So you're always harder critique on yourself than you are when you're building for other people. That's where my heart is, is I just love making other people shine and I love, like, I've, I could never be a presenter. So I don't, I couldn't do what Ashley does on a weekly basis. Because I love being in the background. I love making other people stand out and other people shine with my gifts and talents. So yeah, that's, I think that's where, I forgot all the questions you asked me, but that's where I'm at.
No, I think you got it. That's how you got here, where you are and what you do. So yeah, isn't it wild how it's almost like, like cleaning your, your own or organizing your own space? Like, it's just better when somebody else does it for some of us, maybe most of us. If that's you, let us know. Awesome. Thank you for sharing that. And we'll be coming back to you here in just a bit to get some tips from you on design. So Jessica Downing, welcome. You're new to our team and we're so thrilled to have you. Can you tell us a little bit about where you're from and what you do?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. So I live in Phoenix, Arizona. I've grown up out here, which is unusual because a lot of people are transplants. So I can say I'm a native Arizonan and I love hiking out here and being in the outdoors. Although it's getting pretty hot out there, it's going to be here in the hundreds pretty soon. So yeah, it's, it's beautiful. And yeah, so I have a background in credit union branch management, digital banking and marketing. So similar to Jessica being in accounting, I'm very familiar with numbers and all of that. And it's interesting that I've transitioned into this world, but I've always had a love for design. And I went to life coach school in 2020 and I learned all, all things life coaching. And at the end of it, I thought, oh my goodness, how cool would it be to build websites for life coaches and practitioners and people who want to spread the message and help people in the world? So I got to merge kind of all those, those talents. And I started researching all things business strategy and business funnels. And I also had an amazing coach and mentor who helped me along the way, who introduced me to Attractwell and, and Get Oiling. And now I love being that coach and mentor for others through the concierge team and putting together beautiful designs that really help people take prospective clients to actual clients through building funnels and nurture campaigns and just building that trust with your audience. So you can, you can take them from client to customer or from lead to customer rather. So.
Fantastic. Yeah. Thanks for, for sharing that. And yeah, excited to hear your tips today as well. Jess Danhoff, how about we start with you? What is, today we're going to be talking about some of the favorite design tips and tricks that are very talented ladies here use when designing pages for clients, for themselves and in the Good Oiling System. So Jess, what's your, what's your first tip?
My first tip would be, start with your brand guideline, like make your brand guideline and stick to it. I've, I've come into websites where someone has tried to build their website and they're like, hey, I'm having trouble. And I come in and there's like 50 different look or 50 different font types. And I'm like, well, let's scale this down. So with, with fonts, I just recommend three fonts tops. Like, I always usually recommend like a accent font, usually a scripty font, which I know Jessica Downing will go into that a little bit more, a little bit later, a heading font, which is usually like a Boulder font and then a body font. So like all of your type that's underneath your, your, your headlines. And I usually suggest doing a sans serif. If you don't know what a sans serif is, it's, it's the text without like the little extra like doodads, like hanging off. It's just super simple, easy to read. You don't need like, you know, like it's not hard to read. It's just super simple, simple, clean. And then your other thing is your colors and your logo. I've also come in to a client that will, like I'll help them build their logo and get their colors. And they're like, yep, I absolutely love it. And then two months later, they're like, can we switch my logo? Can we switch my colors? I'm like, sure we can, but it's really not the best practice. Because if you think about it, like think of those top brands that you absolutely love, those places that you keep going back. Their logo has stayed the same. Colors might change like with a rebrand, but not every two months or not even every other year. It's like five, 10 years from now, then they'll do a rebrand. Because people want a logo that they can trust and that they feel safe with and that they feel confident with. And if you're continually moving and changing things, you're not going to feel safe because you, you're seeming kind of wishy-washy on what you like. You're not going to feel, they're not going to feel confident with you because again, you can't make up your, your mind and your decisions on things. So I would just recommend just sticking with something and just, so if you don't love it in the beginning, keep working on it until you absolutely love it and think long-term, am I going to love this logo? Am I going to love these colors for at least five years and stick with it? Some people do go into a brand guideline and, or like when they're coming up with their brand and they're like, I, like you can see brand guidelines that are like 500 pages long. Keep it simple. You don't need to stress about this. What I recommend on your brand guideline, brand guideline is your logo, the colors, like the hex codes on there. Maybe some elements that you like, like if you're like an arrowy person, drop those on there. And this just gives it to like, if you decide to go and get business cards or go and get a brochure, that you can easily drop them in and then hand them this one, one piece of paper that has all of your colors, all of your elements, and then go from there. Yes, this is my template. Ashley will give it to you. I think she's already dropped it in the chat. So that you can be able to take it and use it with your logo. I do recommend a horizontal logo and a square logo because sometimes one's going to look better than the other. And then in the color section, I do have the, like the top zeros. There's like three slashes. That's your RGB codes. If you don't know them, you don't need to put them. And then the hex codes. And again, Canva is really great with giving you those hex codes. And just filling in that in, like I said, there's the accent fonts, the heading fonts, that's all. And then when you replace the, like the font name, make sure you write what that font that you chose is. So then that way you're not like, what is going through Canva trying to find the exact font type? And then I also changed that font name to that actual font that you like. And then that will be a great little piece of paper and then you can take it and use it. And whoever is going to be working with your brand later on will know exactly how you want to be represented. So that's my little tidbit.
Love it. Thank you. And yeah, definitely do check out the chat. There is a link there. It's a Canva template that you can use and download if you want to create one yourself. But this is also something that if someone were to work with you guys, you guys set up brand templates as well, right? Brand guidelines? Awesome.
Yes, yeah, we for sure do. And I don't know if Jessica Downing probably has her own little template that she uses. And so it might look a little bit different if you're working with us personally. But I wanted to get something in your hands that you can actually take and use and utilize on your own if you wanted to try to build it by yourself.
Fantastic. Thank you. Jess Downing, let's talk to you. Tell us a tip that you like to adhere to when building out webpages.
Absolutely. And to piggyback off what Jessica Danhoff was saying, I love to pick a sans serif font, a serif font and then a fun script. But I try to keep it as simple as possible and not go too crazy with my fonts because some of them are a little hard to read. So I try to pick fonts that are really clean, really clear. And with the script fonts, I'm just using those as accents and I can show you some examples here in just a few moments. And then for brand guides, one of the first things I do with clients is we get on a call and I set up a whiteboard in Canva for us. And whiteboards are so fun because it's a collaborative space where we can put pictures and colors and different pieces of inspiration for the site design. So when I partner with someone for the design, that's a big part of the process is the collaboration piece. So the other tip I had was when you're selecting your colors, try to pick a really nice color scheme, colors that don't conflict with each other. And you, like, I like to choose some lighter colors and then a few bold colors that really complement the lighter colors. So you can put those nice pops of color throughout and accent where you want to draw the eye. Because that's ultimately what we want to do. We want to highlight those key pieces of information where we want to tell the audience, you know, this is, this is a big piece of information I need you to know about. So make sure you pay attention to it. And then also using a bright button for, for the call to action. Like you want them to be able to see it so they can click it and go to the next step. So definitely using a bright button.
Fantastic.
And I just had something else to just quickly piggyback off of that. With the accent font, I also want you to realize, like, remember who your audience is. Because I have nieces and nephews who are in their twenties, who they don't longer teach cursive anymore. So be careful with your cursive font and make sure you can read it. Like if it's hard to read cursive, those, if your audience is the younger generation, they're not going to be able to read your site, even if it's just a few accent words. So just make sure you're, you're realizing who your audience is. And then random fun little tip, I have, I learned that the color orange is the most clicked button out there. So if orange fits in your, in your color scheme, in your color palette, make that your button color.
Oof, I like it. Keep it going, guys. What's next?
Yeah, I can share another tip. I, I love you drop shadow. So in, I mean, we have so many tools within Get Oiling and you can really customize all the different little pieces and features on your site. And sometimes what I'll do is I'll take out the background of an image in Canva and I'll pull that in. So it's just what's in focus. And then you add a little drop shadow behind it and it just pops off the page and it looks really cool. And so I like to create pages that almost look like the three-dimensional. They kind of like pop out at you. So that's, that's a cool technique to use.
Can you show us an example of what that might look like?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Cool. So when you're in Canva, you guys, what she's talking about here is if you have an image and you use the background remover, which is included with Canva Pro, you are saving the image with a transparent background, which I think that's what you did here with her amazing image, right?
Yes, let me refresh this really quick. Looks like my browser is being funny. There we go. Yeah, so BC, she's a coach, an entrepreneurial coach. And what I did was I took her picture, removed the background and then popped her in here. And then I added a slight drop shadow. And you can adjust the drop shadow intensity so that it doesn't like, you don't want a huge halo around them. So it just adds a little bit of a hue behind and she's in front of this box. And then here's an example of adding a section shadow. It's a little bit of shadow behind her here.
And what you're doing there is you're using the element editor in the page, pages, you're editing the element. And then you're adding the drop shadow just to her, right? Just to that picture.
Just to her. Yes. So the little magic wand at the top of the page, when you use it, you can highlight the section in yellow and then that'll indicate that you're just editing that section.
Awesome.
Yeah. And then there's a little shadow behind the words here. So this is an example of incorporating a little script font, but not putting, not putting it everywhere, just kind of sprinkling it throughout. And this is an example of a GIF that I pulled in from Canva. It's so fun to play around in Canva. So many things you can do.
This is gorgeous.
Thank you. Oh, here's another example down here. My testimonials. Okay, I'll stop sharing.
That is so cool. How great is that, you guys? Awesome. So you're utilizing animations, it looks like. So GIFs, which are animated images and also those drop shadows to kind of provide, you're, you're taking what would normally be a very kind of flat design and giving it a 3D quality, which is really cool. Awesome. Jess Danhoff, what's next?
Yeah, so mine would be, it's a very simple, very easy to just add a little bit of extra white space in your website. And I'll go ahead and I'm going to share my screen as well. So I had designed this page really quick. This is the, the live view. When you're, and I just, I literally just filled in filler text. So don't even try to read what I have written there. But like, if you see like, there's, it's just all really compact and pushed together. And so a simple thing that you add some appeal is just adding white space to your site. So if you go in and I kind of, let's go to my pages. Go here. So then to add some white space, all you're going to do is going to, on the section that you want to add some extras padding is click on the pencil here and then, I'm going to move that. And then right down here where it says background padding. So generally between sections, excuse me, I recommend, like, I usually go either 50 or even all the way up to like 60, 70, just to add, like you see that, like that white space was growing. You can add just so much, like added white space can be easy on the eyes. It, when someone comes to your site, they're not just overloaded with content and not sure where to look. So then they want to leave because they're just so overwhelmed. It's just giving the eyes just a little bit more space and a little bit of a breathing room. On my section here, you, you did see like I have two sections of text right away. I even recommend throwing in just a section with just a background. So for my, because I wanted to show you what this looks like versus adding an extra image. I just dropped in, what I technically did was I just did a one column, no header. I removed the text from this section here. Hit done. And then I went into my pencil and then I came over up here and changed the background image and found an image that I liked. And then again, I just played with the padding to add a little extra room here so that you can see more of the image. And I even made this a parallax image so that it moves. So you can actually see all of it, which I'll show you here once I get done adding some extra padding. So then again, I'm going to go to this section, add in some padding, which is just again, under the background padding. We'll just pop that up to 60. Pop that up to 60. I added another sunflower image here, just to add more space. We're going to add some extra spacing here. And then this is two sections, but I want, I don't want to add padding to the bottom of what's next. So I'm going to move there. And then I'm just going to quickly add, and then I'll show you the difference that just, just adding padding can do to your website. Oops, I added that to the wrong section. And then, perfect. And now if I save this and hit it view again, see how like the difference that that can do to your eyes just by adding padding? And now versus this where it's just so tight, so cramped and just so overloaded with just text. So that's my little, little tidbit is just to add some extra spacing.
Fabulous. Yes. Negative space is your friend. It's easy on the eyes. Awesome. Jessica Downing, what else you got?
Now, let's see, I'm going to pull up some examples. Share my screen here. I love using parallax backgrounds as well, like Jessica was just showing us. And here's an example. So just to add a little bit more, I mean, professional photography helps the design sometimes. I mean, not that you have to have professional pictures by any mean, by any means, but just this beautiful picture with the sand and kind of letting it move with the page. And then definitely infusing your site with personality, like using your own tone and your words that you would use. So she uses honey. And here's an example of using animations to draw eyes, draw your eye to the lead magnet so that people will stop and be like, okay, what's this? I want to check this out. So just incorporating those little elements to really draw the eye to where you want them to go.
Absolutely gorgeous. That's the first time I'm seeing that site. Wow. This is so pretty. Awesome. Yeah. What else? What's next, guys?
Great. And just kind of like what Jessica Downing said is using pictures and animation to really draw in the eyes, like where you want the eyes to go. Like so for instance, like a picture, like the way that they're looking, like if they're looking off to the left, don't have your text over off to the right because it's going to draw the person's eyes off of your desktop instead of directing them where you want them to go. So even if you want the picture over off on the left, like just, there's a, like a little, even in our, wow, I can't think of the word, our image. What am I, what am I thinking about? Editor, editor, thank you. Wow. You can even just click it and then flip the image. So then it's, it is looking off to the right. Super simple, super easy. I'll show an example site here as well. So I'm just going to refresh real quick because I already had this. So it's just using some animation here that was just helping your eyes flow down, find, following there, her, this list here. She's looking off to this way. Even her hand, like her hand is directing you off to this text. When we have, we have, oh, and this is again, a good example of using the script font to, oh, recreate and reimagine. I want to know, how do I recreate and reimagine? And so then I'm actually going to finish reading the text. Because some people are just skimmers. So you want to try to direct their eyes and help them find the words that you want them to find. Even on this lady's books, I have the book tilted and her eyes are flowing back to this text. Make sure that they're staying on their desktop and actually looking at the text. Another animation to, oh, check out my free goodies. And then we just, we have her sliding in from the left. So then it's again, bringing your eyes to the text or, yeah, on the right here. And then again, just drawing your eyes where you want the person to actually be looking is what my, my third tip would be.
Oh, those are fantastic. And the use of those animations too, where you have a lot of text in a section, like that one with, I think it was maybe reviews or something like that at the bottom. There were three sections with three paragraphs. And that might to our very distractible eyes make us go, ooh, that's a lot to read. That's work. But if they're animated, you're like, ooh, but what did that do? Right? It draws your eyes to your paying more attention, staying on the page and actually doing something with the information. I love it. What else? What else?
I love that you said that because it really is about creating ease along their journey. We're taking them on a journey to find out more about us and what our offers are. And so it's really important that we create a really clear pathway and then also clear calls to action. I'll show you another example. Let's see here. This is a site I put together for myself. It's not really out there in the world, but I was just playing around. So my passion is helping coaches and practitioners. So I kind of built a sales page for that specific niche. So having clear idea of who your niche is, who your target audience is, really helps you get clear on your messaging, which is just as important as the design. You want to have a beautiful design, but you want to have clear messaging to go along with it. So here I talk about like who this is for. So having that above the fold is, as we say, like having it. So having that above the fold, as we say, like, having it as the first thing they see, so that they know exactly if this site is for them. And then here's another example of a parallax and some more animations. And then I create, created this in Canva. Again, I love Canva. It is my whole world. I live in there. And then just using those, those fun fonts, sprinkling them throughout. Here's an example of how we can highlight a bulleted section and still make it look a little fun and dynamic. So I use these little stars instead of just a standard checklist. I still love my check marks, but I like to sprinkle in a little bit more the design elements here, the star. And really breaking it down what your offers are, it's, if you can add, if you can make your offers as clear as possible and continue to draw the eye down, it'll just help them to understand that you're the right, you're the right person for them to work with. Here's an example of a mini bio. And then making your testimonials fun, like, there's so many ways you can play around with testimonials. So yeah, here's another example of like, where it can really pop off the page. Just adding that little drop shadow. So, and then, you know, making a footer, having your, your lead magnet.
That is so cute. I have a follow-up question for you. Can we go back to your screen share pretty please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Curious minds want to know, including myself. First question, on those cute little star bullets that you did on your homepage, are those, are those emojis? Are those from like the emoji keyboard? Or where, where would you find a bullet point like that?
I love that you asked that. So in Canva, I just pulled up, you know, a square template. And I pulled in a star design, and I, I put them in several colors. So I can play around with you mixing it up if I wanted to. So it's just an image of a star that I pulled in, and you can resize it within, and I can show you. Pull that up real quick.
And so it's basically an image that you're allowing to be in line, right, with other text?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up, because I want to share that tip with everyone. Inline text is so fun to play around with, especially for blog posts. So let me show you. As you can see, when we scroll through the editor, we've got duplication, because I've got my mobile-friendly version done. That's another thing. Make sure you do your mobile version. And so these little stars are just little images. And if you wanted to swap them out, let's see. You click the little swap, and if I want to make it a different color, and then it keeps the same size. And the way I did that, click this little replace. Go back to my images, find the one I want to replace it with. And now it's same size, it's in the same format. So real easy, quick fix for images.
Beautiful. And then, one, one other question. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna mention inline, because that is so fun to play around with. Let me show an example of that really quick. Let me just grab a section here. Okay, so we have text here. And then if we want to let me just copy this, make this longer, so you can see how it'd fit into a So we put an image in. Say, we're gonna use this little image here. And it's just, it's in the center, it's above the text, but we want it in line. So we're gonna select display in line, and then I'm gonna use this to left align it. And it's gonna put it right in, in line of the text. So this is great for blog posts, because then you can just put a few images in, and it looks really cool, like a magazine.
I love it. That's beautiful. There's one other design question for something I saw on this page. On, on the publish page, we saw a layered image, right? Where you have an arrow pointing down, and it looks like it's happening between two sections. What's that?
Yeah. Okay, so what I did was I played around with, oh gosh, I don't even know if I can recreate this right now.
Sometimes this does take some tweaking and iterating, for sure. I think everybody should know that.
Yeah, absolutely. So I increased the padding, and then I just put the section color in the square. So here is that blue section, it shows up as white here. If I go to edit style, I can edit the center, and I I change the background color to the blue, so that's why you're seeing blue in that section. And then, you know what, if anyone wants to know how to do this, I recorded a loop. There's a few steps involved, though, so.
That is so cool, though.
And you also, you can use the move element, which I love. This is, you can move things around. Uh, let's see if I'm in that section. You can increase the size, you can position it. So if you want to move something around, you can do that. And I also play around with moving individual pictures, like when I'm highlighting a book for clients, like if they've written a book and they want that to show up. I like to tilt it, add a little drop shadow to the back, and kind of just create, rather than it just being like flat on the page, I want it to really pop out. So I'm using this rotation is a really fun tool to play around with.
I love it. It's really beautiful. Thank you for giving, taking the time for these follow-up questions. There is actually a question for you in the chat. Sarah says the cute tact notes area is a great idea. Did you design those as banners for full-width images?
Yeah, I just went into Canva, and then I pulled it in as a background image.
That's perfect. Very cool. All right. Jess Danhoff, I know we, we were just talking, I think Jess was mentioning mobile, and I know that there was something, I know you had a tip for that, but you've got lots of stuff too. So tell us more.
Yes, I do have a tip for that. I did see some other questions in the chat, so I just wanted to just pop in a reminder. Put those in the Q and A, so we don't miss your, your questions. And you asked about the animations from Canva, are they done in Canva or in G O, or GetOiling? They're done in both. You can do it as a GIF in Canva and then upload it as an image, or you can do it in Canva. And I can show that app. Well, let me just show you really quick on that, just because I don't want to miss your question, because that's an awesome question, because some people just don't know. But let me, let me pull up a, I accidentally closed my tab. So, but yes, my one tip while I am loading this up would be to focus on one section at a time. Like, so when you're building your website, just focus on the desktop. Don't overwhelm yourself. Because if you're doing one section, that's gonna look good on desktop, and then you're working on the mobile, and then you keep on going one, because you, you just saw Jessica Downing's, there's multiple sections for multiple versions of your site. So if you make one edit to the desktop version, now you have to make an edit to the mobile version. Don't overload yourself. And I, we are giving away another little freebie that I created for you guys. It's gonna, I'll show that real quick. It just is like basically an under construction site that you can pop up, so that while you're building your website, you're not like, I don't want people to see that my website's not finished. Then pop this in, it just says worth the wait, I promise. You can change the text, it just says something pretty is coming soon. Please excuse me as I give my website a much-needed glow up. I'm sorry for the inconvenience. Give them a way to send you a message. So if they, that way if they want to contact you, want your more information, they can send you an email. Then that way, they're not just going to a a site that doesn't exist. That's this way that they, that you're still feeling personable until you have your whole site up and ready, and that you're loving it, and it's good to go. The other thing, I'm just gonna pull up a page right here.
And just so you know, you guys, while she's doing that, I've popped into the chat, Jess has provided a resource bundle for this page, if you would like to use it.
All right, okay, so then, like I said, with the animation, so like, let's say we wanted this button, like, I had pictures coming in from the right. If you just click on the image or the text that you want, you're gonna come up to the top, you're gonna click on this. There's the A, the little wand, and then this column, you're gonna click on the wand, and it's gonna pop up. Oh, yeah, I have to click on an element first. See, even as designers, sometimes it takes a moment for things to click through. But I'm gonna click on this picture, because I want it to come in from the right, and right on top here is animation. So this is where you're gonna find, I like the fade-in from the right. I'm gonna click done. And then I'm just gonna hit save, and now when I go to view it, it's gonna fly in from the side. So it's a quick, easy way how to use GetOiling for the animation part.
Fantastic. Who's next? And guys, make sure you grab that resource bundle in the chat. If you have a page under construction and you want to have something like that set up as your homepage in the meantime. All right, Jess, do you have another tip?
Does anyone have any questions or anything?
Yeah, there's a question. Yeah, there was a question here about whether you're using paid Canva, and I was just about to write the answer here. But you guys both use Canva Pro, right?
Yes, I, I do, but I've told clients that the free Canva has great options. Like, so if you're not wanting to pay the extra expense, like, definitely just stick with the free Canva. I even have one client that has the free account, and if she wants a photo that, or like an element that is on the paid version, you can buy one element at a time even. I'm not sure how she exactly does it, but she told me, and I was like, oh, that's a cool idea. I'm gonna have to let people know that you can buy one element at a time. So that's always an option as well. So if you're not going to be using Canva and designing like five hundred things all the time, I probably would just stick with the free one, and then just buy one element as you go.
Yeah, yeah. And I love Canva. They have so many amazing photographs and fun elements that you can play around with and sprinkle through your design. Like what Jess was mentioning in the beginning of the call with setting up your brand design. I think that is so helpful when you start creating your social media posts, and it's just a more cohesive look. And you're really identifying yourself in the industry and setting yourself apart by having a really clear cohesive brand. So Canva just houses it all in one place. It makes it so easy to have your colors right there, ready for you to go when you're, when you're making different elements for your marketing.
Yeah, yeah, it's indispensable.
Yeah. And after you've designed your brand guideline on the paper that you're gonna be able to give to those people, like if they're designing your business cards, there's even in Canva on the paid version, so not the free account. But I'm gonna share my screen real quick again, because I just love this, this part of it. Let me find my tab. So Canva, right on the side here is the brand hub. So then after you've created your account, you can go ahead and upload. So like, I have my GetOiling and AttractWell accounts here. But you'll be able to upload your logos, upload your colors. So then as you're designing, like if you go to home and you're gonna design a new, we're gonna do, we're gonna just pretend we're gonna make a new logo. That's not what I'm actually gonna do, because we like our logos, remember, we're sticking with it. But then, like, if you're, you're now making something, you're making a new design, if you click and you click on the colors, your brand, your color's already there. So you don't always have to type in your hex codes. You can be like, okay, this is my green color. Boom, it's in. Super simple, super easy. Again, that's on the paid version, so. But, so if you have the paid version, I definitely recommend uploading and getting all of your brand stuff uploaded and into your brand hub as well.
Definitely. And when you have that set up, you can also, all of the logos that you've created, if you have those in your brand hub, if you're making, like, like Jess mentioned, social media content, and you want to drop your logo onto it or a watermark, it's really easy to do that, because it's just right there. So that's really, it's just one of those things that it's worth it, if you want to be in control of your brand. All right, what's next, you guys? Do you have any other tips we want to share?
That, that's, that's what I, that's all that I came prepared with.
Okay.
Yeah, if, like, like Jessica Downing said, if anyone has questions, we're more than willing to answer some questions as well.
Absolutely. Jess, do you have anything else you want to share?
Yeah, I quite bring on the questions. I'd love to answer any questions anyone has. And I was just gonna say, if anyone needs any help setting this up, that's what we do. So if you want, like, some social media templates created for you in Canva, if you want your whole site redesigned, or if you like to have one-on-one session, and just go through, and we can do kind of an evaluation, move some things around. I like to jump into Canva with clients and collaborate on design pieces. And so there's just so much we can do together on a one-on-one call to get your site where you want it to be, and make it, make your vision a reality ultimately.
Fantastic. And guys, if you haven't done so already, if you go to getoiling.com/conceiers, that's where you're gonna want to go to learn more about what we are offering here with our concierge team. And you can, of course, go there to, to reach out and ask for details on how you could work with them specifically to get your goals accomplished. So yeah, Sean, if you wanted to make an appointment, go to getoiling.com/conceiers, and you'll be able to do so there. And yeah, so feel free, guys, if you have questions, if you are looking for some feedback maybe on your design, while we've got everybody here, we do, again, keep these calls open to working together live. So if you are someone who would like some help or feedback on your site, you've actually got designers here on the call today. So why don't you, if that is you, maybe raise your hand and let us know. And we appreciate your bravery. Come on out, and, and we can work with you live on the call.
And we love giving our two cents.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anne is asking if we could post the link in the group. You can't copy it from the chat. What you might want to give a try, Anne, is to maybe just click the link, and that way it'll be in your browser when you leave the, the Zoom call here today. But, but we will, I promise, we'll put these into the description for the video when we post this to YouTube as well. So we'll make sure that you've got access to those, so keep an eye out for your replay. All right, Sean, let's bring you out. How's it going?
It's going well. How are you?
Great. Glad to have you here. How can we help today?
Um, my website is wonky. And I would love to have you guys take a look at it, or one or the other, it doesn't matter which one. But take a look at it, because I want to bring all of the elements that I use outside. Like, I use Mailchimp, and I use Practice Better. I want to know how I can incorporate everything under one roof. And, but, I'm getting a lot of hits, like, new traffic and everything, but no one's grabbing. So I know that some of, like, the mobile stuff is off and everything like that, but I would love to have an appointment with you guys to go over just revamping the whole thing.
Okay, fantastic. So here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull your page up here real quick. First things first, when we go to view your site, it does look like you have a, a landing page selected as, as your site homepage. Is that, is that something, do you want to have this here? Is this an intentional thing?
It was at the time when I was promoting it.
Okay, okay, excellent. But you do have this listed as a site homepage in your pages as well. So yeah, so let's, let's take a look. Okay.
And I know it is a million different fonts. I heard you guys earlier about the font, and I just laughed out loud. I was like, that's totally me.
Okay, all right. Well, let's, who wants to start?
I was just gonna say, you've got all the ingredients here. I love your call-out at the top. And yeah, I could see where we could just reconfigure a few things and kind of break up some of the text sections to really highlight some of those, those key pieces of information you want to highlight for your, your audience and
Definitely want to make this a button. Right? Okay. Yeah, you do. You've got a lot of great stuff going on.
You what?
I think you were gonna say something.
Yeah, no, I, like you, like Jess said, you have a great start. Yeah, no, I, like you, like Jess said, you have a great start. Um, I, I think, I think you've done really well. For, um, trying, um, for taking it to this step so far. Um, some of my two cents would be like in your front banner, um, you have just because you are, um, fifty plus. It's just squishing those, those, those two lines together a little bit and then adding some padding on both the top and the bottom. Um, underneath your photo, there's a lot of white space. I love white space, but sometimes there's such a thing as. Um, using the white space a little bit, so it flows a little bit different. So even some of that text that's off on the right would be to make it a new section and then filling that whole space underneath your photo. Um, to just add a little bit, add some animation, um, like Ashley said, the free thirty minute discovery session, making that a button. Um, there's a lot of white space underneath that, maybe squishing that up just a little bit. Again, we love white space, but sometimes there's just a little bit too much. So we just push that up a little bit. Um, same with the meet, um, another happy client. I would even make the meet the happy client a bigger font. And put some animation to it, um. So make that stand out, make it a little bit more holder, um, because you're almost losing it. Because I, I write on that section, I see her three goals. Um, so yeah, you just, just play with that padding, play with the, the fonts a little bit. Like you said, just go down to that three font thing that I suggested. Um, but yeah, your site has great potential. I think we can, we can definitely help you out if that's what you're, you're looking for. Um, yeah. And same with, you have the reactions, um, taking some of Jessica Downing's, um, critique or, um, tips. And maybe even making those like, like she had the testimonials that were different. That you can even add make tho- like those as your frequently asked questions, make them pop off the page. But yeah, you have a wonderful start. I, I, I have to say, I, I, I'm impressed.
Look, I, I'm not going to take credit for it. I did, I did have a VA. And, um, I was working, you know, with doing all of this, but it still wasn't functioning right. Um, and then, so then I started clicking and yeah, all kinds of stuff. And even with my buttons and things like that, I just, uh, it's not cohesive. So, um, if, if I can make the appointment, I will, I'm going to make an appointment with either one. I don't know which one. And, um, it doesn't matter to me because I wasn't really able to look at you guys, um, examples of what you had. Um, but, um, I can make an appointment with you guys, like revamp the whole thing to make it more functional, user friendly. And flowing, because it, it doesn't flow. And then on the mobile, it really, it really looks crazy on mobile.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So we would definitely love to help you. So definitely go over to getoiling.com/concierge. Fill out our questionnaire and we'll be in contact with you right away.
Awesome.
Yeah, thanks for coming out Sean. And, um, regarding, I think you mentioned that you've got MailChimp. And even Practice Better that you're connecting in the background there. If that's, if you're looking to kind of unify what you're doing, then there's definitely space for a conversation where we can help you. Get a strategy in place to migrate over completely. So you can simplify the backend of your business to the degree that you want it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Will that be a separate call? Will that be a separate call from?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, okay. Alright, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Alright, so we also have, uh, we have a couple of folks who have, uh, who've put their hands up here as well. Um, let me. Bring you out here, Carmelita. Welcome. Hi, how can we help?
Um, I would just like you to just take a look at what, um, my husband and I have started.
Okay. Yeah, for sure. What is the, uh, what's the account under?
Uh, it's under Robert Hassan Ritter.
Okay. Is it Hassan Health?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'll bring that up here. Okay. Fantastic. So this is, um. Did you, uh, use the, the Brand My, Brand My Business Workshop? Did you get the templates from there?
Yes.
Alright, fantastic. So it looks like, um, yeah, you guys have anything? Anything you want to add?
I think it's beautiful. The only thing I was going to mention is when you're stretching across the full page and not leaving much space on the margins. Depending on what computer screen you're looking at the page on, it can cut some side, the sides off. So just something to keep in mind.
Okay.
A beautiful job. And I like that you have the blog coming soon down at the bottom.
Yeah.
And then the way you've spaced out, I like that you've given a little bit of spacing between each topic. It just, it looks really clean and fresh. The only thing I would change is the button in the center. I'd keep them all the same, keep them consistent. This is my best practice.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure. And one thing that just from a strategic strand standpoint that you might consider doing. Is, um, is maybe offering an opportunity for people to sign up for updates for your blog before it launches. And so I know you have a lead form on this page, so we do definitely want to keep this here. But maybe if you create a landing page where you offer an opportunity for people to sign up for blog notifications, you can provide that down here. And then when they click, they go to a landing page and they can sign up to get those updates when you're ready.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
And I would even recommend putting a, a little footer on the bottom and just kind of add something like a landing, like a, like, like basically your ground floor. Um, and even like, I don't know if you have Face, do you have a Facebook group or anything or Facebook page, Instagram page or anything? You can add little links for people to connect with you there. Um, even if it's just a simple copyright symbol with your name and then all rights reserved, just so that people know that. Like you have all of that good stuff there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that's going to be, it might even actually, it doesn't look like it's included here with, uh, with this, but you could just simply add it. And I think we have a footer template section. So you can even just pop this guy in right here. Swap these, uh, link these up to your different ones, delete it if you don't have it, right? Uh, and, and this.
So. So if I don't have all of those, just Facebook and Instagram, um, I'd be able to delete the ones I don't have.
That's right. Yeah. So you could just click and delete, click and delete, click and delete and so on. Yeah. And then you can just swap these out. Yeah, yeah. So that's, and that's actually a section that's pre-made that you can add in. Um, I'll allow you to, you can make those, make those changes if you'd like, but, um, but yeah, you can just pop that in. It's pretty, pretty simple.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Alright Laurel, I have your hand up. Let's take a couple of minutes with you as well. Thanks for coming out today. How can we help? It looks like you're muted. Are you there? Can you hear us?
Mute? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you so much. Um, first of all, let me just say thank you for all the information you have given. I really appreciate it. Um, I too, if you could just do a quick glimpse over my website, um, I don't seem to have a lot of activity there. Um, and maybe, um, ladies, if you could, I might have to look at something else in addition.
Okay, awesome. So what we have, um, I'm looking right now. Let me, let me share my screen here. Um, when we go to view my site. I've got this, um, this landing page here. Was there a page that you designed that you wanted to take a look at? Or, um, or are we talking about this as it shows up?
Maybe just, uh, I, I seem to be a little bit, um, stuck in, in moving from one direction to the other.
Okay.
Um, I've kind of done quite a bit of blogs and have my group in there. But I'd like to be able to transfer this to, um, get on the, you know, so that people will come into my site as well.
Right, right. Okay. Fantastic. So do you have, so I see you do have some pages here. But some confirmation pages and, and these, is there a particular place that you're wanting to, if someone arrives at your website? Like a goal of, of where you'd like for them to go or an action you want them to take?
I, that's where I'm stuck. I don't know how, what the best call for the action is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ladies, you want to give it a go?
And I can, then, one of the things I, I try to help clients with is, you know, we come up with a strategy and what you want your website to do for you. Okay. We start with a homepage. So your home is your hub. That's where everyone comes through, is going to be through your homepage. And then we create, um, whether it's a lead magnet button, like I see here, you have a landing page with a, with, um, it looks like a lead magnet. So we can highlight this on your homepage to generate those leads. So you can nurture them through email campaigns and stay in touch with them. And, um, and then my other question, how, what's your strategy? How are you bringing or driving traffic to your website?
Um, I've just been putting it on my Facebook page at this point. I do have MailChimp, but it's actually connected. And I do have this connected to my, um, my, I, I have another website. It's called Sharing Hope and Healthy Living dot com. And on that I have a link from there into it. And that's a public site. Um, that's kind of been my focus. And then Get Oiling is my educational site. To lead people into the essential oils.
Nice. Yeah, and Get Oiling is such a powerful marketing machine. There's just so many pieces. That you can, you can use and leverage. So for example, as you build your, your list. It's going to go into your CRM, your contacts, and you're going to have all your contacts. We can show you how you can use tags. So you can segment your list. We can, um, show you how to leverage the email system.
Okay, some of that I have done. I just don't have everything connected, I think. Um, I have, you know, uh, uh, contacts that are actually on my teams. Uh, and people that have been my customers and I send out blogs fairly regu- regularly. I, I do, I'm an avid blogger. Um, and so then that goes out to my emails as well. Um, but sometimes they don't click on them.
Hmm. Yeah, I mean, we can come up with some creative ways to really engage and entice them to click. And, um, there's fun ways to play around with subject lines and emails and, um, you know, sometimes just keeping it short and sweet. And, and really impactful will entice them a little bit more. And sometimes we have a tendency to want to give a lot of information in an email. And I'm, I'm not saying you do this, but I'm just, as an example.
Okay, I can see where, yeah, sometimes I do get wordy. Okay, um, and so if I. I'm sorry, Jessica, what did you say?
I was just going to say, we can certainly, you know, we can set up a strategy call with you and help you fine tune some of those things. To help you boost conversion.
Then I think that's what I need to do. Okay. And then I can do that in the converge or concierge.
Concierge, getoiling.com/concierge. And another, like if you have, if you're seeing that, um, things aren't really converting. I have noticed that if you have a, um, basically like a lock on your site before people can actually get the information. Like you have that landing page where people have to give you their name and email before they actually go into your website. Some people are like, I'm not giving her information without her giving me information first. So if you add that homepage, that custom homepage that shows people who you are, make them feel comfortable. Be like, hey, here's my house. Come on in, take your shoes off, stay a little bit, get to know me.
I do have.
People will start to come in.
I do have a. I thought I had a homepage.
Um, you, you're seeing our, um, are one of our website themes. So that, there is that page, but you just have that lock and key first. So if you take that off, let people get onto your website first, um, that might help a little bit with some conversion as well.
Ah, okay. So how do I take, so I need to get rid of my unveil the secret page?
So let me pull that up real quick. Oh, Ashley's on it.
I got you. Yeah, so that's going to be over here in your customize my site. And so all you really have to do is, um, require, so where it says require landing page to visit homepage. Um, you can actually select no landing page. And so now they go straight to the page of your choice.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. We'll go ahead and just save that for you if you'd like. Do, do you want to keep that setting?
Okay, yes. Khabibis do.
Alright, fantastic. Awesome. Well, I hope that you will, uh, head over to getoiling.com/concierge. And set up a time with our talented team here that can help you get everything all tied together.
So many, there's so many other things that I want to add because I want to add the Z, you know, um, scans as well. So.
Fantastic.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your help.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you guys for all of your amazing time, attention and questions today. It's such an honor to have you and thank you so very much to our Jessicas for all of these amazing tips, content and inspiration. Um, how beautiful and awesome were these tips and these examples that you guys saw today? Wow, just wow. Um, anyway, we will be back same time next week. I hope that in the meantime, you will head over to getoiling.com/concierge. Learn more about how our team can help you and of course, request a quote for your project. So until then guys, we'll see you back here next week and have a great week. Take care.
Bye, everybody.